Okay, at 7 o'clock, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Village of Bartlett, Counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane. Please call the roll.
Mike Worden?
Here.
Linda Hansen?
Here.
George Cozio?
Here.
Joe Bannon?
Here.
Bob Bucaro?
Here.
Patricia Hansen?
Here.
We have a quorum.
You have before you the minutes from the November 3, 2016, meeting. Shareable entertainment motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Village of Bartlett Zoning Board of Appeals minutes from the November 3, 2016, meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Patty, seconded by George. Please call the roll.
Patty Hansen?
Yes.
George Cozio?
Yes.
Linda Hansen?
Yes.
Bob Bucaro?
Yes.
Joe Bannon?
Yes.
Mike Worden?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Next item on the agenda, case 1515 and 1516, the zoning ordinance update. Chapter 5 on residential districts, chapter 2 on rules and definitions, text amendment. Do we have before us the pictures of the sign, the certified mailings, and...
Just the notification for the newspaper.
Just the notification to the newspaper, okay. Mark that Exhibit A. I take it Roberta and Diana, go ahead.
Tonight, we're here before you with Chapter 5 and Chapter 2 of the zoning ordinance updates. Recall, in years past, we've brought to you chapters 1 through 4. Now, we're moving on to Chapter 5 and revising and updating Chapter 2. Tonight, Chapter 5, previously was 83 pages in length, and has been revised and condensed Charts, which is shown up on the screen, are now being utilized to eliminate duplication and redundancy from each residential zoning classification, thereby simplifying the ordinance. So, we've taken very general terminology and simplified the chart and the uses, and then listed each of the residential districts, and then whether it's permitted or a special use in that district. Also tonight, we have three policy issues that, from years past, are contained in Chapter 5, and so I was going to briefly go over each one of those. The first one is commercial motor vehicles, inoperable vehicles, recreational vehicles, trailers, all-terrain vehicles, watercraft, snowmobiles, and semi-trailers. This ordinance has been revised and is now clarified specifically for the distinction between commercial motor vehicles and trailers. Trailers are now generally categorized so that any trailer, regardless of type, will fall under this revised section of the ordinance. And staff believes these modifications give the village a stronger case if a violation were to go to court. The second policy issue dealt with churches, religious institutions, and places of assembly. Previously, the term "place of assembly" was not defined in our zoning ordinance and was often used interchangeably with "religious institution." The ordinance was also not consistent in the regulation of religious land uses as required by the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. And, to us planners, we call that REI LUPA. REI LUPA states that, subject to some exceptions, local and state governments may not impose or implement a land use regulation in a manner that imposes a substantial burden on the religious exercise of a person, including a religious assembly or institution. So, in this revised ordinance, churches would now be classified as religious institutions and would be regulated the same as places of assembly, since they have comparable impacts, such as parking, noise, traffic issues. Places of assembly, religious institutions, lodges, both fraternal and civic, equal or less than 10,000 square feet would be permitted by right in the ER 1 and the ER 2, which are the estate residential districts, and as special uses in the remainder of the residential districts. These same uses, if they are greater than 10,000 square feet in area, would require a special use in all of the residential districts. Staff believes this revised ordinance more closely meets the REI LUPA requirements. And then finally, the third policy issue was dealing with impervious surface. You'll recall, the impervious surface regulations were reviewed by this board back in December of 2013 and approved by the village board in February of 2014. This ordinance set a maximum impervious surface percentage for residential lots, based on their lot size, to reduce stormwater runoff and maintain green space. The staff has been implementing this ordinance and its regulations since its inception. To date, no variations have been requested. So, when we took Chapter 5 for the first time to the village board committee for review, it was back in April of 2016, and a variety of topics were discussed, and several trustees felt additional staff review was needed regarding agricultural uses in residential districts, and specifically beekeeping, chickens, and impervious surface. So, I can... Each one of those topics is specifically outlined, the historical perspective of how it went through the village board committees, how it's here before you tonight. I can go through each one of those topics if you want me to. The beekeeping, the raising of chickens, and the impervious surface. Or, if you have specific questions on any of those regulations or any topic, I can answer those. It's up to you on how you want to proceed.
Board, do you have any opinion on that? We probably could ask her questions instead of...
I have the regulations. I can put them up if you have a question so that the audience can see them.
Well, go ahead and put them up in case people in the audience have a question.
I can go over it in general. It started with, our current code regulates agricultural uses with a minimum of 10 acres. So, staff thought, in looking at our zoning ordinance, currently, horses were allowed on 2 acres. So, we thought 2 acres might be a more reasonable allowance, and we proposed to reduce it to 2 acres. And, on this map, I know it's a little difficult to see, but the areas in red, I can point to a few of them on here, show the areas where agricultural uses would be allowed. So, there's some spots along here. Okay.
Where they would be allowed and not necessarily allowed?
Yes. If we proposed originally a 2-acre minimum.
So, is it 1 horse per 2 acres, or 1 or...
It's actually 2 horses per 2 acres, and then for each acre above that, you get another horse. So, pretty much a horse an acre.
Okay. That's what I thought it was. Thank you.
And then, what we did is, staff was asked by the village board to further review and find out what other towns are doing, and so we've done some charts here for you of other towns. This one is dealing with beekeeping and where it's allowed. Do they have a community apiary or not? Our board directed staff that they didn't feel like they wanted to go to the community apiary route. They wanted staff to provide some regulations for allowing beekeeping on single-family lots, and that's what's contained in your packet tonight. Any of the regulations that are in red were the most recent discussion from the village board committee, and those changes are in there. And then, that has been implemented into the actual ordinance itself that's attached. I have a diagram here of how, where the bee hives could be located on a typical lot. What we did is, originally, staff was thinking that we might need a setback of 25 feet from the property line, but when we plotted that out, it actually put the bee hives almost in the middle of the yard, and it didn't seem to make sense. So, we thought typically, you're going to want them as far back in a corner as possible, but still away from your neighbors. So, in this scenario, 15 feet seemed to be a good number from the backyard and the side yard, and as you can see, if they were placed right here, it'd be almost 40 feet from this neighbor's house. And then, we also applied, in the regulations, fencing, vegetation, a flyway barrier, that type of thing. So, all of that is spelled out in the regulations, which are here.
Roberta, the 40 feet and the 30 feet on that diagram?
Yes.
That's just an example. That's not...
Just an example, and this is actually on the smallest lot. This is a 10,000. We were proposing a 10,000-square-foot lot, so this is the smallest example. It will only get, you know, more space from here.
So, 10,000 square feet is smaller than a quarter-acre lot?
Yes.
Just barely, yes. The regulations are in your packet. These are the regulations we have proposed for the beekeeping on single-family lots. And then, we have, the next topic was chickens. We also did a survey on chickens, what other towns allowed chickens, and their setbacks, their requirements. Typically, there's no roosters involved with raising chickens, because the roosters are the ones that make the noise. And, let's see, we researched 24 towns, and 8 allowed chickens, 16 prohibit chickens. The board directed staff to look at allowing it on single-family lots. Those are the regulations that are contained in your staff report from the result of that directive.
There were a lot of good comments and letters in here that I found very informative. One thing I would question, I mean, beekeeping and chicken raising, these are not, or they haven't been normal things. Of course, having a marijuana dispenser come before the board wasn't a typical thing either. What if the principal person dies, or all of a sudden, they have to put the house up for sale because of a job transfer or something? What type of provisions are there to make sure this stuff gets cleared out and it's just not left to deteriorate?
It's called a real estate broker.
I mean, is that...
It's the property owner's responsibility, so whoever owns the property would need to follow all of the regulations.
We've even had village officials that left in the middle of the night in the past. What if this is not an owner-occupied situation, and somebody just up and leaves, and we don't know what happened?
Somebody owns the property.
Okay, so we'll go ahead.
Even if it's rental, the property owner is responsible. And, we're trying to treat this on a code complaint basis, so if there's a problem and neighbors see it, then they can call the village, and we can come out and do an inspection. It's not a problem.
Okay. I have a really...
One of the things that, if you look in the regulations for both bees and chickens, we're limiting it to 25 permits, so that it isn't going to be like you're going to have 2,000 beekeepers and 2,000 chickenkeepers. We're starting out small, similar to what Elgin did. So, just so you know, it's not just wide open. It's the first-come, first-served, 25 permits. And that's something the board wanted to put in, in the initial year, with the caveat that if it's successful, we could revisit it.
I have a really stupid question, and I am a city girl. What do chickens do when it's 28 below zero? Where do they go? I mean, obviously, they're not out pecking around in the yard. What happens to them in the wintertime?
It's my understanding that they stay in the structure.
Chicken coop?
Yes. And, in the regulations, we put in there that the structures shall contain insulated walls and/or an insulated blanket. Even Blaine's Farm and Fleet recommended and sell the insulated blankets for the structures.
And that appears to have been a change from the wording about a heated structure?
Yes. We actually got that from a resident who is here tonight that could probably speak a little bit more on that than I can.
Let me ask, what is the acreage we're going down to? Less than a quarter acre for a chicken coop?
I haven't got to the chickens yet, but this is the chicken diagram for the lot. This one shows a typical, it's smaller. It's an 8,000-square-foot lot. It shows the area. According to the regulations, we've put a 10-foot setback on this surrounding area here, with the most likely place of the chicken coop, depending on where you wanted to put it. But, if you put it closest to the house, then you're looking at at least a 14-foot separation here on this typical diagram.
So, it's already been approved, that we can allow it on 8,000 square feet?
Sure.
Yeah, so we're... Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, wait a second.
So, 8,000 square feet is about a fifth of an acre.
Which is not a very... Pretty much your apple orchard. That's pretty much going to be a standard lot from probably the last 25 years.
It's one of the more common zoning lots in the village.
Right.
SR 3 is what it's closest to.
And we're strictly talking single-family at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I remember the questionnaire on the chickens, weren't there 3 choices of the lot size?
Talking about the survey that they ran on the website?
Survey?
Correct. I think Roberta put it in here.
I did. It's in your packet.
And what was the determining factor, and who decided or suggested the smallest size?
Let's see. We had the 2-acre lot size, which is what staff had originally proposed, and then we had the 10,000-square-foot lot size, and then we had the 8,000. And overwhelmingly, the 8,000-square-foot lot size had the most respondents in favor of, at 53 percent.
Wow.
I have that chart in here, too.
Typically, how many chickens would somebody have that's doing this type of activity?
We're proposing a maximum of 4 hens.
Reason I ask is I noticed we regulate the 3 with dogs and cats, and...
That's correct.
But you can have more chickens than...
You can have more chickens.
Yeah.
They're smaller, usually. Now, I did become a little more favorable when I read Nancy Blondin's letter on some of the information that she provided, but I had a question. Jim, this is a letter that is dated August 4 of last year, from you to Jennifer Andrus-Rasmussen. And, at the bottom of it, it has the number 1 for the page number. It's talking about by birds from hatcheries that participate in the U.S. Department of Agriculture, National Poultry Improvement Plan, U.S. Voluntary Salmonella Monitoring Program. That's, you know, what if we had a bird flu or a salmonella outbreak? If this is permitted on a bunch of small lots, and you have pets around, and the feces is not being cleaned up real well, couldn't we potentially have a problem?
You can always have a problem. As Roberta stated, that's, we would handle problems, like we do with dogs and cats, as code violations. So, if there was a particularly messy chicken coop, and we got a call, we deal with it in the context of a code violation, that it has to be, you know, kept clean and kept nice. I'm not an expert on bird flu or any of that stuff, but if the chickens... Typically, chickens are going to have, just like cats and dogs have certain diseases. I don't know if they can spread to humans. Jennifer is here. She probably could answer that a lot better than I can, but again, we're only limiting it to 25 lots initially.
You know, and I guess, one of the major concerns I have is I have a little dog, and I live on an open 4.4-acre green space, and we have coyotes like crazy. And I stand outside 4, 5, 6 times a day in 10-below wind chill factors, because I'm petrified of this coyote coming over my fence and eating my dog. I mean, what makes it any different with chickens? And, you know, I have raccoons, and I have skunks, and I have possums and all these other critters. I'm not petrified of them, but when I see 3 or 4 coyotes running open in my field, I have a problem with that. So, is there any... Are there concerns with that? Have there been people that have had concerns with that?
I think a few of the residents can talk about that, too, but the structure, you know, is going to be enclosed. It has to be in an enclosure. So, there's a structure, and then there's an outdoor area as well. All of that is completely enclosed. So, is it possible that a coyote could get in there? We're not going to say no, but...
But is it going to attract them? Versus maybe, okay, maybe he can't climb the fence and get in, but can he be... Is he going to like to come around there?
It's possible.
When I saw the survey, I thought that the 8,000-square-foot lot was rather small. I would have been happier if the recommendation was 10,000 feet or larger. I mean, this does get pretty close to one neighbor being in the face of another.
I agree with that.
So do I.
I would guess the 53 percent supporting an 8,000-square-foot lot goes back to the numbers, Jim, that that's the most common lot size, you know, in the village, so...
I'd agree with that. There was, quite frankly, there's people that live on those sized lots that are in favor of this. And so, you've got a majority of those lots, and I think that's been expressed by the residents. And, as Roberta said, when we first started out, we were at 2 acres. It was the board that directed us to go and make it, you know, more palatable for a smaller lot. Just from personal experience, there are lots in Chicago, and I've seen them, that are even smaller than this, and people have chickens. And your chicken area is, what is it, maximum 100 square feet?
Right.
So, and you have 10 square foot, so it's not a big area out of the yard. So, you got an 8,000-square-foot lot, and you saw the diagram of how much of the lot would be occupied by it.
I have a question. There was a letter in here that talked about waste. How do you get rid of the waste? Chicken waste? Chicken waste. I don't know. It says here, how do you, you know, does the public service accept, you know, these type of materials? How do you get rid of chicken waste?
I'm going to wait. I think that's a question for the resident that has more experience than in that.
Okay.
You know, what the village proposed, going down to, or the staff, I should say, to 2 acres, to me, sounds pretty reasonable in view of the fact that previously, it was at 10 acres. So, that's a five-fold decrease in the size. I'm kind of concerned with these lot sizes, 8,000 or even 10,000 square feet. I think there's a lot of people in the village that probably do not speak up, that probably would object to having chickens and so forth next door to them.
Well, I'm going to reiterate that the board basically directed us to go smaller. And, not going to throw anybody under the bus, but that's how it shook out when we first proposed this. And I think there's a sentiment, you know, that if you're going to have them, why not allow them on a typical lot size? And again, we're only starting out with 25 permits. City of Elgin's kind of gone through a similar thing, and their lot sizes, you know, they're not exactly similar to us, but the towns that do allow them don't require big lots to have them. They're on your fairly typical lot. So, it's just kind of what we've done through our research, and kind of the direction the board gave to us when we first presented this chapter.
It would seem like the structure is no worse than a shed.
Lot similar.
Bigger than a shed.
Right.
Well, some. It's a 10-by-10 shed, 100 square feet.
That's a maximum size. Typically, the shed at the coop is smaller physically, and again, the residents who will speak can directly relate to that.
So, permits, I guess this would apply to bees or chickens, but let's stay on chickens. Permits would be required annually, so if there...
A license. Let me clarify that a little bit. So, they would initially come in for a building permit for the structure, either the chicken structure or the bee structure. They would apply for the permit. The staff would go out and, once it's up, would go out and inspect it. They would apply for a license, either a beekeeping license or a chicken license, so that we have a number, because we're trying to keep it 25 and under, to see how this plays out. And, there would be a one-time, I think, what was it, a fee, $25 fee. Again, we want to keep this and regulate it as we do other things, such as Mike mentioned, dogs and cats. It would only be on a complaint basis for the staff to go out and look at these things if there was a problem. So, it'd be a one-time thing. However, we would like them each year to fill out a license so that we can keep track of the number in the village. That's the only way we would be able to keep track. So, the initial building permit, initial fee, initial inspection, and an annual license for us to keep track of the numbers. That's what we're looking at.
And, they start with 4 chickens, and what's to keep them from having 8 chickens, or 10 chickens, or 12 chickens? Is that the neighbors' complaints? Is that what it is?
Yes. I do believe the neighbors might complain about that. And then, we would go out, and if there's more than 4, that's a problem.
And you get to take them home, right?
Okay. I guess my question is on enforcement, then. If they have 4 chickens, it says in the ordinance that the coop must be cleaned, and that seems to me to be, and again, I don't know that much about chickens and chicken coops, but from what I've read, it takes some work to keep chickens, and certainly to keep the coop clean. So, if a neighbor complains because of smell, let's say, and enforcement goes out and sees that, you know, the coop is not being maintained, and there's feces all over the place, what power, what authority, you know, what ramifications can the village do to rectify that situation?
We would treat it just like any other complaint. So, if, in the proposed ordinance language, letter H, we have "All areas where hens are kept shall be clean and well-maintained with little to no accumulation of waste, such as to cause odors that are detectable on adjacent properties." So, if a neighbor calls in and complains about that, staff would go out, do an inspection. If we find it a violation, we would ask them to see if they could clean it up. We write a letter. We start a process on it. I think, Jim, isn't it, by the second time we go out, and if it's still a violation and we're still getting calls, that's when we can write a ticket and send them to local adjudication.
That's right. It's similar to how we get complaints with dogs and cats and garbage cans and...
Geese.
Yeah. Any code complaint is handled in that similar manner.
Okay. So, on a grass complaint, that's handled by the public health guy, right?
Right.
Not by code enforcement?
Correct.
We'd probably have both our staff and the health officer go out together, because I do believe that there's a crossover on that.
Okay.
So, I mean, if it continued to be an issue, I mean, then they could not be allowed to have chickens? I mean, could it go that far?
Well, ultimately, if it goes to local adjudication, they're fined. That's, the hearing officer has, our position is if you don't comply, you're fined. And so, it depends on how, if it keeps being a nuisance, it can be a continued complaint and a fine every time they come in. So, I mean, the fines can be up to 5... So, I mean, the fines can be up to $500 a day. It depends on how you value your chickens, but, I mean, it's like, most people, when they get hit with a fine, they comply. And that's, that's just the standard zoning violation enforcement kind of language.
Was there any thought given to, I guess...
Revoking the license?
Well, yeah.
I think that's possible. And I think that could be one of the results of the local adjudication case, too. I think they could be fined and their license revoked.
That's possible.
Yeah, I do believe that.
Is our only vote that we have 8,000 square feet? That's it? That's what we're voting on tonight?
No.
Or can we vote it down and say we want two acres?
That's proposed.
That's what's proposed. The board is interested in hearing your thoughts on these regulations. And if you don't like the 8,000-square-feet or you would rather see a different number, that's what they want to hear from you.
I don't like the number at all.
I mean, I think it's small. I think, again, not having lived next to one or maintained one, I don't know if I'd like to see 15 feet away from my lot line, a coop, you know, 100-square-feet structure, the entire thing. You know, I don't know if that opinion is typical of other residents, but it's just, it's close. And I know it's the thing to do. I know it's popular these days. I know they're in all kinds of cities and on smaller lots. I just, you know, am of the opinion that it could really become a nuisance and that residents who have to live next to those 25, if there ends up being 25 coops in the village, that it just not, you know, might not be a nice situation, whether it be, you know, if there's not much difference between a 10,000-square-foot and 8,000-square-foot, I'd have no problem with two acres. It's just 8,000 is small, I think.
I think it's particularly small, too. And when you look at someone who's going to live next door and resale value of a house, I don't know that someone would want to buy next door. So, I don't know that it's going to affect values either if you were being in that neighborhood.
I think, you know, two acres is reasonable for the time being, and this issue could be revisited as far as the lot size in the future, say, one to five years, to see how it works out during that time period, and then, if necessary, go down.
I would tend to agree, but let's maybe wait and see what, there might be people in the audience that have more informed ideas or input than what we might have.
So, why don't we move on to the next part, and then we'll open it.
Yeah. That's what I was going to say, before we have the public hearing, let's open up to the impervious surfaces, if anybody has...
Are the bees?
I do have a couple of comments.
Okay.
With the eight or 10,000-square-feet on the chicken coops, I understand why people want it on the smaller lots, because the smaller lot is more typical and would open it up to more people. I'm just not sure that neighbors would like having that in an area where the lots are smaller. Like I said earlier, when I saw the survey, I sort of thought that the trend would be for the 10,000-square-foot lot. The two-acre lot, I think, is excessive. That just, that practically excludes everyone in the village. That's, that's not reasonable. And then, I do have a question on beekeeping, or even the chicken coops, I guess. When you start to talk about a setback from a property line, if the, let's say, the back property had an easement on it of 30 feet, how does the setback that's being recommended play into this?
Well, typically, you can't put an accessory structure in an easement. So, it would be, it would have to be out of that 30-foot easement, if that's your example.
So, if, for example, we're, we're saying that there's a minimum of a 15-foot easement for like a beehive.
Right.
If there was a 30-foot easement, that was a drainage easement or a conservancy, then...
It would have to be fenced outside of it.
That structure could be at the 30-foot line.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. I think that's reasonable. Thank you.
Is that it now? We can go to impervious?
We'll have to go back to bees.
Back to bees? Okay.
Bees?
I've got, I probably took a different approach to bees than everybody else, maybe. I'm allergic to bees. So, I've looked at, and I ended up in the hospital after being stung by bees, fortunately a long time ago, but I'm, I see this much more as a life-safety issue, because people get stung and people die. And so, I've looked at it and tried to analyze this. I'm a certified safety professional. So, I've gone through what we would do on any safety issue, where you have to recognize hazards and anticipate hazards, and then evaluate the hazards, and then you try to eliminate the hazards. What I see with allowing bees on a small lot is that we're creating the hazards. It's a lot different than a trailer or a commercial vehicle parked, you know, in a driveway. It's literally a life-safety situation to some people. Fairly rare, typically, an average year, there's 53 to 58 people who die in the United States from bee stings. Now, I understand the European honeybees are not aggressive. They, you know, if any kind of bee, you leave it alone, it'll leave you alone, is the general thought. But for those who are allergic, highly allergic, if you get stung, it could be a very, very serious situation. There's estimates that 4% of the population are allergic. They break it down, 3% adults and 1% children. So, 4% of Bartlett's 41,000 people means that there's a potential 1,640 residents who are allergic to bees. And what, by keeping this on small lots, a 10,000-square-foot lot, 15 feet away from a lot line, we have created a significant hazard if that person next door happens to Happens. In 2015, a man in Palatine was stung, and he died. In 2006, a golfer at Medina Country Club was stung, and he died. Now, I couldn't verify the Medina one, but my recollection of that incident was he had a can of Coke or can of soda in the cup holder of the golf cart, and he went to take a drink of the pop. There was a bee in the can, the bee stung him in the mouth, and before he could get help, he died.
That is true. I can testify to that. That is true.
He didn't, you know, he didn't do anything wrong. He didn't aggravate that bee. Bees like sweets. You have a picnic on your deck during the summer, and you have cans of pop out, you got food out. It's very common for bees, whether it be honeybees or bumblebees or paper wasps, I mean, it really doesn't matter. I know we're talking about honeybees here, but you attract bees. And in this case, in Medina, the bee obviously was attracted to that sweet pop. So, that could very well, I believe, happen, have a child outside playing, have a can of juice or something, and very close is, are these hives. And if that child is allergic unknowingly, it's just, it's not a good situation. My understanding, and I hope there's some beekeepers out here, because we can maybe clarify some of this, but a well, a mature, large hive, the colony of bees in there could be upwards of 50,000 bees.
That's correct.
And we're allowing two of those, that's a lot of bees. Now, the only bees in a honeybee situation that don't sting are the males. They're the drones. But in a colony of 50,000 bees, they would anticipate about 300 drones, or males. So, most of them are the female working bee, worker bees, and they have the capability It's, I mean, the bees are a fascinating insect, and I understand the good that they do, and we need them. It's just, you're going to have all these bees coming in and out of those hives. What we, we go back to the anticipate, control, eliminate, well, we have a control by putting a five-foot barrier around the perimeter so that they have to fly up, but that doesn't mean they're not going to find some flowers next door or the can of pop or whatever and make a stop. The, I believe, from what I've read, there'd be a lot of activity right around the hives. The bees, young bees, need to learn where they're at, because they're going to go out and forage up to two, three miles, if it's a good area. If they don't find the nectar that they need, they may go six, seven, eight miles, but they have to come back to that hive. And so, what they do, it's called a playflight. You'll have the young bees, probably several hundred, will be flying around the hives themselves as they acclimate themselves to this being their home. And the life cycle is fairly short, so you've, you've always got new bees. So, my understanding is you always have, right around the hives, and, you know, whether that's 15 feet, 20 feet away, you're going to have the younger bees doing this playflight to get their bearings, which, you know, it's all about risk. And I, you know, I just see we're creating a potential life-threatening risk. Two-acre lot, 100 feet away from anything, anybody, so that they have time to disperse as they go their different ways, yeah, that probably would work. But in our true, small residential districts, as looked at in the 10,000-square-foot, I just think this is a real bad idea. I would fully support a community area, because, I mean, you think, you go out to the nature park, the partnership with the state, or the forest preserve, I guess the forest preserve don't have any, maybe because they don't want that liability, much like the village, I think, reading through all this, the trustees are looking at cost for community one and potential liability. But then, I don't agree with them putting it on a small lot and kind of washing their hands of that. I don't, I don't, it's not the way to go. So, I personally and professionally think this is not a good idea, and I could not support it at all.
I did some research on the Internet, and my research was nowhere near as extensive, but I did encounter indications of the large number of bees that could occupy a single hive, and that concerns me. I think that that many bees in a rather small area is potentially dangerous.
What would be your feeling on the size, then? Would you agree with the two-acre requirement, or...
I guess I could agree with the two acres. That gives enough land to disperse the bees. I would have a difficult time, I have a difficult time agreeing with bees on a lot of 10,000 square feet.
I absolutely agree.
I would probably don't know.
Yeah, definitely.
Again, going back to what the neighbors, I mean, if you allow this, and then the neighbors next door have issues with it, I mean, that can be quite a confrontation. And then, you end up in a dilemma of where do you take your complaint to and who sides with whom? So, I think if you have two acres, you have, I agree, you have much more space, and you won't have that interference on a small neighborhood lot.
I think even if you have an acre, you are isolated enough that you probably wouldn't have kids hitting a baseball into the beehive or others being attracted to it to cause a problem. I don't know that we need to drop it down to two acres. I think we could go an acre, or possibly even a half acre, depending on how many permits are, would we limit the permits in a geographic area or just 25 at large?
At large.
At large, okay. That would be something to consider.
Okay, let's go to the bees.
When I, when I look at the beehive kind of idea, I envision a funnel that very quickly spreads out, and you've got all of these bees focusing in on the hive, because, as you indicated, that's where they're going to go to at night, and that's where they're going to go to deposit the honey. So, it's a back and forth, constantly honing in on this rather small condensed area where you're going to have the large concentration of bees. It concerns me.
I mean, one other item that I found was, we may have heard of Africanized honeybees, which I think came to this country about 20 years ago. It started on the south, and it's moved. Now, they're pretty much everywhere. There was a case up in Utah. Those bees, unlike the European honeybees, are very aggressive, and they swarm and they attack. And there had been instance, an incident, I found one instance in Tennessee where it was documented where the Africanized bees invaded a beekeeper's hive and took it over. And now, they had to, you know, control it and destroy it, but it seems like those bees are becoming more prevalent, and we may, may see more of these invasions into, you know, actually, the beekeepers. Without having any beekeeping now in Bartlett, there's bees. I mean, it's maybe not like they used to be because of other issues, but they, the hives exist, and, you know, there, there haven't been any known issues, but we, I think, would be creating the potential.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Let's move to impervious surfaces. I had mixed emotions at first with the, taking the pool, or did you have anything to say?
No.
Okay. Removing pools from the formula, because things are not going to drain down into the water aquifers, but then, I began to think, this is like a cement retention pond, and we would seldom have so much rain that it would cause the pool to overflow. So... So, I guess from that standpoint, maybe I, I would not object to removing it. But, I don't know, it seems to be kind of a potentially contentious thing.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I think it, it's a vessel that will hold water, so the rainwater will be contained, that you're not gonna have the runoff, which was the whole purpose of the impervious surface, so that it can percolate into the ground. Well, it can't do that, but it's gonna be contained nevertheless in the pool. So, I, I, I can see where, you know, people look at that and say, it's a retention pond, how can you count that area? So, I wouldn't have a problem with this.
I have to say, I was happier with, or was happy with the original ordinance. I thought that the impervious surface definition should include the pools. And one of the reasons I say that is that, as someone said, it, it's a concrete-lined hole-in-the-ground retention pond, but the bottom line is, is that water can't get underneath this concrete-lined hole-in-the-ground. And when I look at the examples of, of the pools, you could take and increase the size of a pool to occupy quite a bit of a yard, and because you're going to exclude the pool from the calculation, you're gonna cover an awful lot of the square footage of that yard with something. And that something doesn't allow water to, to travel through it. And in an area that something like that might happen, you could be forcing water into a neighbor's yard. Again, to me, the whole idea of, of, of an impervious surface is something that prevents water from getting into the ground. And yes, I agree that the pool retains water, but it also blocks water and prevents anything from getting underneath the pool. It's gotta work much harder to get there. And if the pool is too large, you're gonna block an awful lot of square footage.
Well, and with an eight thou, well, like this example, it's 7,800 square feet, with the pool, it's allowed 41%. That's a lot of space taken up by a pool. I just think that's certainly acceptable. That's, that's a big enough pool. Whereas you go up further, it goes up to 35, and, you know, 26%, 40, 45% of your property is a pool. Is impervious, including a pool, 50%? I, that seems really high to me.
I mean, I agree 100% with your comment. Like, the, the lot size of, of the 11,000-square-foot pool, if you doubled the size of that pool, there's, there's not much green left.
None. None, really, probably.
That's the whole idea of having...
Green space.
Green space, right. Earth that water can get through, percolate down into the, to the subsurface.
I have to agree with George. While the pool is going to hold water, it is going to prevent the ground from absorbing rainwater. So, I do not think that, that the pool should be eliminated from the formula.
Let's open it up to a public hearing.
I think that excluding the pool makes the, makes this too, too easy. It, 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 it softens the intent of what we're trying to do way too much.
Especially on, on lots less than a quarter acre.
Right, that, that's, you're talking 50% of that property is impervious property. That's, that's an awful lot.
Anyone else before we open it up? Okay, at this point, I shall open the meeting up to the public. If you're going to have something to say, we have papers by Jim to fill out, then you don't have to be sworn in separately. Just fill those out, and then you can, one by one, have, take the microphone and, and have something to say.
I have three already, so is anybody else?
Go ahead and call them, Jim.
Call them up, Jim.
Call them up. Nancy Blondin. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nancy Blondin, and I'm at 152 Sunflower. I just wanted to come out tonight to voice support for the chickens, and the bees, actually. My kids have wanted chickens for quite some time, and then inquired, I inquired several years ago, but was told at the time, no, so we're actually excited about the possibility. I think it keeps people connected with the reality of where their food comes from. I don't feel it will be much trouble, because you guys have done a really good job at going through, you know, what kinds of regulations would be needed to make sure that the neighbors will be, you know, satisfied with what's going on. I am a veterinarian, as, as you stated. I am not a chicken expert veterinarian, nor do I want to be. But I can answer questions, if you guys have direct questions that I can answer, or I can find answers for you to some things. I know that there's people here that also have had chickens before and can answer firsthand some questions about, you know, what do you do with the manure? Composting, I think, mostly. So, I think there are, if you have questions, I will try to answer them. I know one of the questions was about coyotes. My family has had neighbors that have had chickens. The coyotes learned very quickly that the fencing was strong, they tested it, but they learned that it was strong and that they couldn't get in there. So, then, very quickly, they gave up. So, I don't know if that was your experience as well, but that was ours out in the country. So, you know, bunnies and other options, I guess. I can speak more about diseases, if you want more of that information. Generally speaking, salmonella is spread through the feces, and it gets in your body orally. So, handwashing and maintaining the stool in a place that's not going to end up in anyone's mouth is, is really how you keep that from being a problem. So, you know, just normal handwashing procedures takes care of the most of that. Bird flu would be something that would be, I think, unlikely to happen in a three-to-four bird, you know, area. I think it would be very much more likely in a commercial setting where you have a large flock that you would have to deal with. So, I think it would be possible, of course, just like anything, but I don't think it would be as likely in a very small setting like you guys are talking. That was all I wrote notes about, I don't know if you had any other specific questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
What's the size of your lot on Sunflower?
We're about a third of an acre, I believe.
Nancy, do you have any knowledge, or can you comment on histoplasmosis?
Oh, gosh, I would have to look that one up. Toxoplasmosis is more a cat poop thing.
Right.
Histoplasmosis, I would have to look up transmission and, and all of that again. It's been a long time since, since I've been tested on that one. So, I'd have to look up details for you before I spoke. But I can, if you need, if you need information.
Yeah, I mean, I've got an article here, you can interpret it, but what I found was histoplasmosis is very prevalent, and I found some conflicting information, whether the birds themselves carry it, or whether it's the fungus in the ground, but then the feces...
It is a fungus, I can say that, from memory.
It activates all of that, and it becomes a problem when it's airborne.
It's inhaled spores.
Right. So, if you have the area where the chickens are pecking, the outside area, if there's feces there, and that compounds the histoplasmosis, histoplasmosis spores, and it's dry and windy, how far would they go, and is that a potential?
Well, I think something to kinda keep in mind, too, is that you're talking, these are potentially closed flock type things. I mean, they're, they're going to be exposed theoretically to wild birds and that sort of thing, but it's not like you're going to have a large number of birds, and importing birds and exporting birds, and in and out all of the time. So, I think it would be a small risk. Like I said, I can look up details for you and interpret and give you more information. That's something that you wanted to look at specifically.
Any further questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Jennifer Rasmussen.
Do you really have a chicken shirt on?
I do. I had to, in my shoes. In my, yeah, in my shoes. Jennifer Rasmussen, 361 South Hickory. Again, to address the coyote, the predator issue, the bigger problems is people putting their trash out before trash day, 'cause that's more of an easy access kind of thing for them. That's gonna bring them around more than a contained flock.
We actually have them sleep in next to the fence line.
Oh, yeah, I don't doubt it, but that's, the chickens aren't going to bring more of them in, they're already here. Like I said, there, the cases that there have been of, like salmonella outbreaks, have usually been confined to large hatcheries. So, again, as Nancy said, there's, it's pretty much a large, a large flock issue, not so much a small contained flock, you wash your hands, you keep things clean. You're really not gonna have, wash your eggs, you know, that kind of thing, before you eat them and cook them. As for the run, I think that was another question. We've recommended hardware cloth, not chicken wire, because it's much sturdier, and you can get it in much smaller squares to keep more of the rodents out. The property values issue, seven out of the 10 cities on Forbes Magazine's Most Desirable list allow chickens. St. Charles has allowed them for about 20 years. I know Elgin's pilot program has been a huge success, so neighbor complaints really haven't been a problem. They, I believe there are results that it actually improved some relations in the city, so just something to think about. Disposing of waste, you can compost it, or you can dispose of it, just like you do cat poop and dog poop. You put it in the garbage. Republic Services takes dog poop and cat poop away, just the same. So, poop is really just poop. Not sure, any other questions that?
How many, how many eggs does a chicken lay a day?
Usually one. They slow down in the winter, because they, there's not as much sunlight, so production slows, it slows when they molt also, but usually one a day. So, they say an average is like two birds for each person in your house, but I know Bartlett's looking at a maximum of four, which is, which is fair.
So, we're not gonna have people, we're not gonna have, instead of Kool-Aid stands, we're gonna have egg stands on the corner?
Nope, and you can put in there that you're not running a cottage business selling eggs out of your house. You know, that would be a cottage industry.
I mean, you see, you see all over fresh honey, and, you know, pure Bartlett honey, or West Chicago honey, or, you know, I mean, you see it all over. So, local honey is being sold all over.
Right.
What do we do to stop the little kids, you know, instead of a Kool-Aid stand, they're out there selling eggs?
I mean... We talked about the, the selling of the eggs, and, and we would probably look at that more as, as a home occupation.
You'd have to have more than four chickens to be selling dozens of eggs, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, when you figure a family of four, if you only have four chickens, one a day, you know, you're not, you're not gonna have a surplus, really.
We would register them for sales tax.
There you go, revenue for the village.
I, I work for the Department of Revenue, that's why I said that.
I didn't hear what you said. And we're actually on a quarter acre. When the board originally looked at this, reducing it to two acres, I think they came out to 14 properties, one of which was Sunrise Park, and I'm pretty sure nobody's gonna raise chickens there. So, I think two acres is still a little restrictive to allowing most of the residents. The other thing is, my dad hates chickens, and he lives in Bartlett, but he's absolutely for giving this a shot. So, somebody who's pretty particular about his yard, and his cars, and his house, and his everything, he's like, I'm, I'm for giving it a shot. If, if it has a problem, then you revisit it, and you, like, oh, this isn't working. You know, I think you guys have that option, right?
Okay, you're a chicken lady, right? Why would you want to, I, I guess I don't understand why anyone would want to raise chickens. What, what is it about, I mean, you go to Julia, buy fresh eggs, you know, what's the, what is the advantage to raising your own chick, pardon me?
They're not fresh. Some of them, they've been sitting for 45 days before they even get to the store.
What's the advantage of being a chicken raiser?
Because you know where your food comes from, you know where you're feeding your birds, so you know what's going into those eggs. You are being responsible for yourself. You know, you're not relying on somebody who's had their eggs sitting at their farm for 45 days before they even take it to the grocery store for it to sit for maybe two weeks or more before it's sold. So, I mean, it's a common question, a lot of people ask it, you know, it's not...
I mean, it's not like it's a pet, and then are you gonna eat them?
No, there's no slaughter. You just raise them until, just like in any other...
Don't you eat your chickens? You just raise...
Their eggs.
Huh?
Eat their eggs.
I know, but...
What do you...
People eat chicken, what's the difference between a chicken layer and a, or an egg layer, and someone who's gonna, wants to raise them to eat them?
Usually two different birds. You buy a bird that's known as a meat bird, and you buy a laying hen.
Okay. I told you, I'm, I'm, I'm not a country girl, so...
What I'm here for. What I'm here for.
Our ordinance has no slaughtering in there.
Bartlett has no slaughter rule?
In this, in this ordinance, there's no slaughtering of chickens.
Yeah, no slaughtering.
Okay.
No roosters.
Maybe you could describe the coop. Sorry. I was just gonna say, why don't you describe the coop, and the dimensions, and some of the parameters regarding the insulation and that kind of thing?
Okay, well, yes, that came up about removing the requirements for having a heated structure. That's a really big fire risk to have a heated structure, for starters. The other part is that the birds, most of the ones that you're gonna get here, if somebody's being, you know, researching their birds, they're gonna, you're gonna look for some, a bird that can handle, like a Rhode Island Red, it's the Rhode Island State bird, it can handle the cold, that's the kind of bird you're gonna want. They're used to that environment. They raised chickens in Alaska, they can handle it. But if you keep them in a heated coop in the winter, they're not gonna be able to handle it. If you lose power, your chickens are gonna die, because their body temperatures just haven't been able to get acclimated to the different, you know, the warm, the cold, the temperature changes. So, insulated is gonna keep the drafts out, that's what you want. You don't want the draft in the coop, because that's how you get sick birds, that's how they're, you know. So, the insulated walls is definitely a good requirement, 'cause you don't, you wanna keep it as draft-free as possible. Yeah, you can use the blanket, too, just, like, to keep snow out and stuff like that, 'cause they really don't like the snow, so they're gonna hang out in the coop most of the time when it's really cold out. And then, space-wise, each bird really needs like four to six square feet of space per bird. They're kinda like pack animals, they like to be close to each other. So, requiring large amounts of space, you can require that, and they're still all gonna flock together in one little group. So, four to six square feet of space for the run is definitely adequate, 'cause you're gonna find them all together anyway. So, it won't create a huge lot issue, it's gonna be a smaller. The coop space, you know, they don't need as much space as they do for the run, 'cause again, they're all gonna perch up by each other at night, you know, and stay warm. So, it's not gonna be a huge, ugly, you know, eyesore for your neighbors.
Thank you. Do you have any expertise on bees?
I don't, unfortunately. I wish I did, 'cause I am really ignorant on that subject, and I have some friends that would love it, but...
I have a question. Let's assume that you moved next door to me, and you were to build the chicken coop, and, and I didn't know it, and there are suddenly four chickens there. Will I know it from sound, I mean, from the noise that the chickens make?
At their loudest? At their loudest, they're about as loud as a human conversation. When you factor roosters out of the equation, they're not loud. The squirrels are louder, the wild birds are louder, the dogs are louder. So, it's really not a noise issue.
Without, obviously, without the rooster, it, it's much quieter.
Mm-hmm.
Not only the roosters, the chickens also, I would imagine, from what I do know, a little bit.
Yeah, the, the hens are pretty quiet, even when they lay, they're still, they're not loud. They're, like I said, it's about 65 decibels.
As the hen ages, it becomes less productive?
Mm-hmm.
So, at some point, that chicken is no longer worth keeping?
No, it just doesn't lay anymore, it doesn't diminish their life anymore.
Well, if you're keeping them for eggs primarily...
Are you keeping them for pets?
Well, then that would become that until their life cycle is done, just like any other animal.
And how, what's the life cycle?
They can actually live pretty long, they can live seven, eight years or more, depending.
And how long are they functioning egg layers?
They're going to lay pretty steadily for at least the first couple of years and then they gradually will taper off. Some of it depends on the bird, some birds are really heavy layers for a longer period of time, some are, some are not as good.
So, let's say you were more interested in the, the chicken that's the, the egg layer. At some point, two, three years out, you, you have to recycle them in some fashion.
If you want to, you can, but...
If, if you're interested in the egg layers.
And, and in my case, I have friends that have farms way out towards Union, so if that was something that I wanted to do and said, okay, you've lived out your usefulness for me, I can take them to a friend that just takes...
So, Bartlett, so you could deport your chicken? Send it off to a farm somewhere in Rockford or whatever, okay.
But, yeah, not, not the slaughter.
And if a bird died, what, how, how do you, how do you get rid of it?
Same way, I think, with any animal, you'd have to find a vet that deals in chickens, which they do have those.
Okay.
Okay. Joel Slo, I, I'm sorry, are you done, Jennifer?
I'm done.
Joe Slawinski, I think he left. I, I saw him leave, so... Okay. Then Laura Fazio?
Hi, I'm Laura Fazio, I'm here to support, oh, 229 Eastern Avenue. I'm here to support Jennifer and the chicken ordinance. So, my sister-in-law has chickens in St. Charles and my children love them. And she was telling me how it kind of builds a community on her block with the other children. It's a very nice learning lesson about the cycle of life, our food source. Can I just ask a couple of you, how many of you shop at Whole Foods or Mariano's on the board? Okay. So, for me, I'm not a big organic person to begin with, but I'm learning very quickly how our food source is being tampered. And my nephew has an egg allergy and he can eat the fresh eggs. And he does, he has no reaction from those eggs. Store-bought eggs, he does, from restaurants, he does. And so, when you ask, why would anyone want to raise chickens? That is a good way to have a nice, fresh resource of your food and for people who have egg allergies, that actually helps them. And I was researching the average age of Bartlett and it's around my, my age. I'm not going to tell you my age, but it's in the 30s, okay? And so, Bartlett's population is a younger generation. And I know, I'm not calling you old, but I'm saying that you are from a different generation than myself and the people that are moving into Bartlett. And I think, when we think about property value, people that are younger are moving into Bartlett. And they are, I don't think it's a trend, I think it's a movement. It's a movement of knowing where our food is from. And if they see a chicken coop in the backyard, I'm not going to say it's going to up the value, but I really don't think it's going to decrease the value. And I feel that in our local government, I feel like we could do more change than our big government and especially in our country today. I feel that as a citizen, you know, I didn't march on Women's Walk or, you know, Pro-Life Walk or... I'm here today at my local government to, to see change in our city, to just improve our lives and not to be an eyesore for neighbors or to be a distraction or disturbance to neighbors. So, I just wanted to add that. And with your question about the, the look of it, right, the coop or if it's, if it, you're going to look next door and that coop is going to be really ugly, there actually is really cute coops, if you go on Pinterest or Google. Blaine's Farm and Fleet sells them also, so that's on South Elgin and they're cute also. But they really are not a huge eyesore. They do, you could buy those at Blaine's Farm and Fleet, they're very cute. And chickens are not loud at all, especially the hens. And in regards of wildlife, I, I agree with Jennifer, the coyotes are already here. I live by middle, the middle school, and they're catching stuff in that field and, you know, our garbage. So, they have plenty of food over there. They're not sleeping on the side of my fence though, so that's, that's a little bit scary.
They sleep in the backyard, they actually have slept in the backyard, so...
Yeah, that's, that's scary, but, um, so, I'm just here to support and hopefully, what I was thinking also, for the people who do get a license, perhaps Jennifer could give a class about maybe raising chickens. So, they're doing it the right way and that they know, I mean, with the license, obviously, there's going to be restrictions, regulations, but perhaps maybe have volunteers to educate the people that do want the license, so it does not become a problem. So, thank you.
That is a good idea.
Do you have any other names?
That's all the ones that I have been given.
For chicken coops.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess at this point, we should probably take the items, the hotbed items separately.
We need to close the public hearing first.
We usually have to wait until we have a, a motion on the floor, but should we close the...
If you are so inclined to want, this is, there's a lot in here, as you can see.
Yes.
The big topics, obviously, were what's been mostly discussed, but the staff and, and Roberta and Angela put a lot of work. There was 86 pages down to 11. So, there's a, the bulk of this ordinance, I don't think there's much issue with. I didn't hear anybody say that, you know, about how we condensed it, I think you're all fine with that.
I think it's commendable, I, I think the way you did and even the chart, having that, that chart instead of having a bunch of scattered ones, you can have the, the reference right there.
So, in your, in your recommendation, you could, you could go with, you know, generally the bulk of, bulk of Chapter 5 and the definition changes are all good, and if you want to recommend approval, that would be good, and take the, the three issues...
Separately.
Separately, and you could make separate recommendations on bees, chickens and impervious surface, and we could tally up separate votes on those recommendations.
Okay.
Does that sound...
Okay, okay.
I like that idea. And I, I have to say, when I, when I got the document, I was amazed at the reduction. Eighty-some pages down to 11, 12. The charts are fantastically easy to use, they're very functional. You can, you can get your answer really quickly. And when I looked at the part where it said, this is the rejection, the rejected text, it's amazing how much repeated from section to section to section and just made it difficult to, to work with, so...
Well, even the simplification with the trailers and the motor vehicles stuff, I thought that was very logical, very well thought of. You, you to be commended doing that.
I, I used to write user documentation for, for, for IT and I, I have to commend them to be able to do what they did to go through this. That's got to be boring as heck. And they produced quite a professional-looking product.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so do we, I'll entertain a, a motion for...
I'll, I'll entertain, I'll make a motion, but I don't even know how to put it into language. What's the language, Jim? That we approve or that we send a positive recommendation to the board concerning the reduction from 83 pages of...
No, Chapter 5.
Chapter 5.
Yes, it is.
So, just Chapter 5 as revised.
With the definitions?
Yeah, and then it's going to be open for discussion then on the three topics. And we'll try to get a consensus then to, to move forward with that, but...
So, there's a motion on the floor to approve Chapter 5.
With the caveat that there will be separate discussions on the other items.
The beekeeping, the raising of chickens and impervious surface.
Impervious surface.
Okay, let's, let's do that, is that good, Jim?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so we have a motion for that, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Patty and it's been seconded by George. At this point, I'll close the public hearing portion. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Patty Hansen?
Yes.
George Cosio?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Bucaro?
Yes.
Linda Hansen?
Yes.
Mike Warden?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Can, can we make a motion on Chapter 2, which is just the definitions?
I'll make a motion that Chapter 2 definitions, that we send a positive recommendation to the Village Board concerning Chapter 2.
Second.
Okay, again, it's been moved by Patty, seconded by George, it's been a positive recommendation on Chapter 2 concerning the definitions. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Patty Hansen?
Yes.
George Cosio?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Bucaro?
Yes.
Linda Hansen?
Yes.
Mike Warden?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, you want to go to the beehives first or the... Any preference?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we send a positive recommendation to the Village Board concerning the beehive issue on lots no smaller than 10,000 square feet.
Which is what is written, that's what staff has proposed, 10,000 square feet.
You're, you're basically just approving...
I, I'm sending a positive recommendation for a 10,000-square-foot lot to be able to have a beehive.
Oh.
No second?
Second.
All right. So, anything 10,000 or more, so basically, you are still allowing a lot smaller than a quarter acre to have a beehive.
That's correct, that's, that is what was the recommendation from staff.
Okay. And George seconded?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Patty Hansen?
No.
Hold on a second here now, I gotta switch papers. Okay, Patty Hansen?
No.
George Cosio?
No.
Joe Bano?
No.
Bob Bucaro?
No.
Linda Hansen?
No.
Mike Warden?
No.
Motion denied.
Okay, let's move to the chicken coops.
Well, there could be another motion on beehives.
Okay, we have another motion on beehives.
Do you want to propose an alternative for the board for the beekeeping side?
I would like to propose to the board a recommendation of a half-acre parcel, allowed one beehive.
I like that idea, because a half-acre still has a lot of room in it.
That's a motion.
A half-acre by the square footage, like, which is 22,000 something?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's one hive.
Okay.
No second?
At, at some point, at some point, would we allow two hives on a larger...
Well, we allow agriculture uses. Two acres, it's still in the code, it's proposed for two acres.
I see, okay, so we're just...
And you can, as an accessory use, do beekeeping as part of that. So, this is allowing specific regulations for something smaller than that.
So, it's a half-acre?
Half-acre, one hive.
One hive.
If you have two acres, more hives.
That's the motion on the floor.
Okay, motion on the floor then to allow one hive on half-acre lots.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved by Patty, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Patty Hansen?
No.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Bucaro?
No.
Linda Hansen?
No.
George Cosio?
No.
Mike Warden?
Yes. So, you don't have a quorum?
Did not, that motion failed.
Okay.
Two to four.
Any other motions?
If you look at me, okay, I'll make a motion that we send a recommendation to the Village Board to allow one beehive per acre lot.
Okay, now we're, we've moved it to a one-acre lot for one beehive.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I will second that.
It's moved, moved by Patty, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Patty Hansen?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Bucaro?
No.
Linda Hansen?
No.
George Cosio?
Yes.
Mike Warden?
Yes.
That motion carried.
Okay, so now we have a, so we have a positive for the...
One hive per acre.
One hive per acre.
Okay.
Okay.
We've got it now.
Pardon?
Got that, good.
Let's move to the chicken coops.
What's the, what's the lot size recommendation from the, from the staff?
8,000.
I can't.
Do you, do you want to do, do you want to do the motion first on the 8,000, which...
Okay.
And then we can raise that?
Okay. I'll make a recommendation of allowing on an 8,000-square-foot residential lot, a chicken coop with no more than four birds.
I will second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Patty, would you believe? And seconded by Joe, to allow it on lots as small as 8,000.
It's the only way we're going to get it done tonight, folks.
Yep. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
All right, Patty Hansen?
No.
Joe Bano?
No.
Bob Bucaro?
No.
Linda Hansen?
No.
George Cosio?
No.
Mike Warden?
No.
Motion failed.
So, I'll make a motion that we allow raising chickens in a chicken coop in a residential property of one quarter acre.
Yes.
Pardon, what size?
Pardon, what size?
One quarter acre.
Is that 11,005 or something like that?
Well, it's 43,000 square foot, an acre, so it's, yeah.
We, staff would prefer if we could make it simpler and just round it. So that's why we went with 10,000, 8,000 and 10,000, but 10,000 would be okay.
Okay, 10,000.
Okay.
Which is smaller than a quarter acre.
Just slightly.
Yeah.
Patty, you made the motion and Joe, you seconded?
No, George.
George?
Would the, um, the distance to the lot line, would you envision that would increase or no?
I'm, I'm going with the assumption that all the other regulations would apply.
You know, we're hardly changing anything here from 8,000 to 10,000 square feet. I'd like to see a bigger change.
We got to go step by step, Joe.
Okay.
It's going to be here all night.
Well, at least we have a lot of unanimity here and...
So we have, so we have a motion on the floor and a second.
For 10,000 and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Patty Hansen?
No.
George Cosio?
No.
Joe Bano?
No.
Bob Bucaro?
No.
Linda Hansen?
No.
Mike Warden?
No.
Motion failed.
Now let's try a motion to allow chicken cooping on 4,000, 4,000 square, no, 43,000 square foot lot.
An acre.
Which is an acre, okay. 43560 is how many square feet are in an acre?
I would suggest a half acre first.
You want to suggest a half acre first?
Yes.
Okay, we'll make a motion that you be allowed to raise chickens in the village of Bartlet on a residential lot of the size of a half acre, which is 20...
20,000.
20,000.
Say 20,000.
Say 20,000, okay.
Is there a second?
They moved...
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Bob. Moved by Patty, seconded by Bob for 20,000. We're looking at the equivalence of a half acre. A little shy of it. Further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Patty Hansen?
No.
Bob Bucaro?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
No.
Linda Hansen?
No.
George Cosio?
Yes.
Mike Warden?
Yes.
That was a tie.
Right.
Three to three.
That failed then, didn't it, Jim?
Yeah, motion failed, sorry.
Do we want to make any more recommendation or do we want to just leave it at that?
Or would that just go to the board as a three-three vote?
That's correct.
That would go to...
It's not necessarily...
Like a roll call.
You could just send it to the board with a three-three tie.
That's correct.
Let's leave...
Then they have to actually vote on...
We could do that.
Their position, okay.
Let's do that.
That's what would happen.
Okay, let's move to the impervious surfaces. Apparently the pool is the controversial thing. Would we want to make a distinction on the lot size as to whether we're, this has to be a blanket statement for all jurisdictions then?
I think with the pools, it was pretty much either you take them out of the equation or you keep them in. I don't think there was a distinction between any lot sizes. So you're, you're actually recommending to either keep pools in the impervious surface calculation or exclude them, which is what was presented.
I'll make a motion that we send a recommendation to the village board that we continue to include a swimming pool in the impervious...
Calculations.
calculation, thank you.
I second.
Second. Okay, it's moved by, by, seconded by Linda to keep the pool the way it is now in the calculation for impervious surfaces.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Patty Hansen?
Yes.
Linda Hansen?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Bucaro?
No.
George Cosio?
Yes.
Mike Warden?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, wow. I guess we've addressed all the concerns, right?
That's, pretty much covers it. Now, did we cover the definitions?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We did, okay, I missed that.
We have to redo that. We have to do, have a technicality on chapter two.
For the definition for pools, if they...
Impervious.
Impervious. They want to include pools, so they want to not change the definition.
Want to keep the definition the same.
As currently is written.
So can we amend your chapter two vote?
So that's my motion, I have to amend my motion to show that a pool is what?
To take, to not change the definition of impervious.
To not change the definition of impervious.
Right, to keep it the same.
Keep it exactly the same.
Correct, I'm sorry.
And you seconded me before, right?
Linda, you accept that?
Yes.
Okay. So...
Let's vote, let's vote again.
Let's vote again.
All right, Jim.
It's okay. All right, and then there was the same motion and second, so...
amended, amended motion.
Chapter two definitions, it's only because of impervious.
Because of the last vote that we just had. You have to bring it in alignment.
Okay, then Patty Hansen?
Yes.
Linda Hansen?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Bucaro?
Yes.
George Cosio?
Yes.
And Mike Warden?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, any new business?
Um, the only new business, it's a sad business, I don't know if any of you remembered Evelyn Lesko, longtime plan commissioner, she passed away. We got word about that today. She was 20 years or so on the plan commission, a wonderful lady. And there, there's not a service announced, I think it's a private ceremony, but just let you know that because I know some of you might have known her for, over the years. And other new business, you all know Valerie is retiring.
Yep.
There's not been a replacement yet. So soon there will be because she's only got about a week left. And I don't think we have a meeting next week or next month at this time.
Thank you, Jim.
I understand that she will be at the next board meeting on Tuesday night, that will be her last.
Tuesday night is her final village board meeting after...
35 years.
35 years, yeah.
I remember when she came on.
Amazing.
I feel the same way about Ken.
I was only like two.
Thank you, audience.
Okay, at this point, I shall entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It moves and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.